That's four o'clock, so the meeting is called Order. I want to thank everyone for making a special effort to come to this meeting today because I know some of you had to shift some, some hours around and I really appreciate it. This is the first special meeting I've been to. So, we're gonna get started right away. We've got a agenda that ends at 5:15 and we have a meeting coming in here at 6:00, sorry, so. Okay, so at four o'clock here is opening comments from the chair. And basically it's a background of Milton Creek Woodland Reserve and the Joint City Port Trail. I was going to give a more detailed review of what was discussed, decided upon, and what wasn't decided upon at all the meetings between February and May regarding the joint trail and the Milton Creek Reserve. I decided that that would not be helpful in helping us come together on these issues and moving forward in a cohesive way. I do think you should know the following facts however. And number one, at the February meeting when the subcommittee was created, I did not have any previous discussions or knowledge that this item was going to come up. Since it was at the end of the meeting and I could not prepare for it, the scope, the purpose of the committee was never established. I suggested at the time to wait until I got back from vacation as I was leaving the next day. Number two, I was unaware of the conversations occurring with the city and the port regarding the joint trail until I returned from vacation seven weeks later. When I did find out, I was quite surprised, especially considering I was a co-chair of the subcommittee. Number three, the subcommittee never met until I called a meeting which was held on Monday, April 15th. At that meeting, two things were primarily discussed. The process for bringing items forward through the commission and changing the name of the subcommittee to better reflect the scope of what was presented to the port. The consensus was to change the name to City of St. Helens and Port of Columbia County Proposed Joint Milton Creek Trail Project. Number four, in previous meetings, particularly the April meeting, a subcommittee member expressed opinion that the subcommittee was about the trail on the other side of the creek, not the reserve area. This is the understanding that I have been operating under. The joint trail project and the establishment of Milton Creek Woodland Reserve are two distinct but related projects. Each was separate issues, approval processes, timeframes, and cost. So, the process of taking action on agenda items. The process for doing this will be to use our parliamentary procedure. That means we will have a motion, a discussion, and a vote. As chair, I cannot make a motion, so the motions will need to be from the commission members. It is important to remember that any decisions we make reflect the majority vote of the commission. I will do everything I can to help get those decisions implemented. I suggest we have a short discussion on each of the questions before us for clarification prior to making a motion. The decision items are listed below on the agenda. Now, I believe Brandon has some comments to make at this time.
So just first off, I wanted to thank everybody for your involvement and your interest in this project. I expressed before, I think it's a very worthwhile project. Anybody that's been to the area that we're talking about knows that it is a beautiful area and I hope we can move forward in a positive direction and do what we can to preserve as much of it as possible for future use for the citizens of the city. It's a beautiful, beautiful place and has a lot of potential. So I want to thank those that have been involved with this project, projects. However it might be, I think we've all seen that the way that it's been working hasn't been working. So I'm happy that we're having this meeting, having a chance to sit down and discuss how to move forward in a positive direction. I think everybody wants that, so I'm hoping we can have that happen. Scott reached out to me this morning with a proposal of how he thinks his situation might work a little bit better and he can introduce that and talk about it a little better than I can. But ultimately, it's up to this group, it's up to the commission, how you are going to choose to move forward on this project, how you're going to work together, because that's what this is. This is, it's gonna take teamwork, it's gonna take a lot of effort to bring this to fruition. So, it has to be a team effort and I think that's a lot of what Scott's gonna mention right now about the collaboration between the whole group. So Scott, if you want to mention your proposal and take it from there.
With the agenda, so a motion to propose a different approach. I'm just gonna go with that.
We all vote, this is the super.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you're right.
Looking to do an approach to this. Think everybody would be happy, would be happy with that. So what I'm suggesting is instead of having a separate documentary to manage the Milton Creek Reserve project directly to Parks and Trails Commission with all commissioners on equal footing with no designated project chair. The rationale of this is the, this is a large-term project with many interconnected parts that we should all join in on and have a role in. Depending city council, we have an opportunity to stand the trail, identify the master plan and create a unique recreational opportunity in Columbia County. There's also the potential for partnership with the boards to expand. Taking a commission joint ownership approach allows for different commissions to come in and out working on the project rather than restricting activity from subcommittee members who may not always have the necessary manpower. I mean, there's gonna be a lot of work on this. People take holidays. We are not always available, so it's just so that we have more manpower. And also, the approach allows the commissions to work on the aspects of the project that fits their interest and availability. As Lynn has said, the current path we're on is not in the best interest of the overall project, the commission and the community. Taking a commission-based approach will allow us to present a unified front and give us a fresh start. These are suggestions of the working model going forward. If the proposal is adopted, we'll have to figure out how to best manage the project as a commission and likely the approach will evolve over time. What I'm suggesting in this is the standing agenda. Each month for the project, what I envision is a a time or, you know, exact time, so if we can get people outside of the commission involved in this, they can come in and also have standing to speak on it also, because maybe we need to get, you know, as much as we can capture out of this, these, this land. Many, many people behind this. So, that's I'm looking for that with people like Patrick, probably. Just, you know, students that you saw basically post with the grade on there. Maybe Lynn's advisors in her presentation is, if we can just get some, you know, more support. Just so, you know, we don't have any, anybody taking too much of the role in the whole thing. I think we could rotate a discussion later throughout these meetings. Just to help facilitate. Like I said, it's gonna involve interested parties and stakeholders at the meetings. I think the next step would be, you know, putting a draft project together. I would be looking, or we would be looking for volunteers for that. And one person that I think would be really good at this would be Dan. And another person I would think is Lynn. I think they both have very good organizational skills. This next part, it is about, you know, about a week and a half after the port presentation, I emailed both John and Sean, the executive director at the port, about doing a site visit. And never got a response from either until just last week. Sean said he didn't, he didn't read my email and responded and said he'd like, you know, would like to go out on the site. So I'm hoping that we can set that up and try to get John out there too and then anybody else who wants to come up too. Just one like that. Everybody aware of what's happening? If you want to talk about it and discuss the proposal.
The three's, oh, sorry, go ahead. I was gonna say the three interested stakeholders would be the port, the mill, and the city. Is that correct, or am I adding some figures?
Oh, the port.
So just the port and the city?
Well, what I'm thinking, I think Lynn has some interested parties. I think I contacted, well, discussed previously with the president of the CCA, Senate Constitution, for the salmon in Milton Creek, possibilities on that. He seemed interested. We announced he's gonna make a call, but just looking at initial contact and knowing we get something developed, you know, I'm calling about. Other entities, we could, you know, trying to do an educational approach on what we call, it'd be very liberating, but Lynn has done some work on that also. We talked about the history and the prehistory of the area. There's something about that, trying to get other interested parties involved, maybe the museum, that's, that's thing. We have a contact right here with Brad. Yeah, we had mentioned that. Sorry, I didn't.
Hold on, I'll mention it. We have a board meeting here, so.
And just so you're clear, there is, there is no mill anymore. There's no mill people. We are, we own it all.
Yeah, but also there's gonna be new mill.
Right now, you say Helens and the port, that's it. Even if that does happen, it shouldn't affect property that you're talking about.
What I really like about this proposal is that it allows for really clear communication, a consistent set time for discussion, and the opportunity for all interested parties to participate, which I think will really help move this particular project along. Unity in the whole commission, in addition to any other interested parties, is what's gonna give us the best outcome, period. And so, I think this is a really great idea. That we, as many people who want, as we can, including those who are not on the commission and aren't part of the subcommittee. It opens it up for the public in a way that would be super beneficial for the project as a whole. And again, just that clarity, so there can not be any, you know, I'm sorry. There cannot be any, any missed connections or miscommunications. Well, even that is, I feel like in this particular project so far, we, we've discussed it several times and I think in a couple of cases, each individual, even though we all have the same conversation, picked up part of the conversation and it was no longer the whole image, you know? I, I think I was guilty of that myself. I felt quite confused after our last meeting that I didn't think I understood the way I thought I understood it from the conversation before. I feel like I've heard Lynn speak to that, to that, and so having a consistent, recorded ability to converse on this topic and work on ideas together will be fantastic for preventing those kinds of things in the future, because then we can review the minutes, we can review the videos, we can stay up to date as long as we.
I think with all the stuff that's going on with the city right now, if we don't have a real clear concise message, a lot of things may get lost in the weeds and it may not present very, I guess, viable to the interested parties and the people we're all trying to come together with. So I mean, I'm definitely on board, especially the rotating discussion leader, not just having, you know, a couple of people. Everyone has a, I guess, their hand in the pot in a good way and have control over some things is good.
I just wanted to point out that not everybody on the commission will have the time for it. If they're ready to actually lead a discussion, then it can work.
But with the intention of me, like, say, say I went out and I was working on, you know, project A and I was researching, I was, you know, doing, doing my part and after working on project A for a certain amount of time, I asked to be on the agenda or asked to be the speaker for whatever meeting and I didn't do it, right?
Since, still, this is just a potential model.
Yeah.
Anyway, I would want work. You know, I mean, I can just, you know, rather than have this, put it in here as the end items on, we just gotta be recognized and then just yes, they, whatever, as the, pick a special word, recognition, you can just, you know.
I want to make sure that anyone who is requesting to speak, who's done the work, yet has the opportunity to speak, you know, without, without question, you know, that we give them the time and the ability to have a floor.
That's, I really want to work.
We've got to remember we're all volunteers and we're not for. We like to think we are, but you know, I mean, our best laid intentions sometimes get lost or it's like, oh, maybe that wasn't quite the right way. So as long as we learn from what we've done, you know, we gotta remember we're all volunteers on this and we're here to.
And what our end goal, our end goal is to serve the community, right? And to preserve a beautiful location and to make it functional, to make it accessible, you know, to benefit those who come after us. It's, it's all about that and keeping that in mind in all of our projects.
I have such a concern because the name started out as one thing and it was changed on the 15th of April to the City of St. Helens and Port of Columbia County Proposed Joint Milton Creek Trail Project. So then I'm seeing here on your hand. Just a minute, just a minute. And then in April, on April 8th, I gave my presentation to, about that Boise Park area, hoping to name it the Milton Creek Woodland Reserve. And I've been waiting to move that forward to the city. So I don't know why this name is being used.
That's the name that we adopted when we first.
No, it was changed on April 15th by consensus. That's what I just read.
I never consented to you.
Brandon, I'm gonna throw this back to you.
If I can speak, please. Plus, in order, I also pointed out, in order to actually change the name, do we have to go to the full commission? That's what I believe.
No, I think Brandon's.
That was the meeting outside Melissa's office. So, yeah, there was a discussion and.
There was a.
Terry proposed a name, I believe, and, but, again, I think that you could think. At this point going forward is how is this product, how, not only how is this gonna move forward, but what are we gonna call it? What's the name gonna be? So I think today's a good time to figure that out.
Yeah, on that note, I think that's a really great opportunity to bring up something that, that I've been personally struggling with in this whole thing is getting caught up on some of these, some of these nuances, you know? We should all be a cohesive group with the same idea in mind. And so, something as simple as the name, we can easily discuss it now, vote on it now, move forward on it now. I think any of the history at this point is not beneficial to the future of this particular project and I would really love to see an effort on all parties working together to set all things behind and just move forward with the best intentions.
Okay, yeah, my presentation was given. So it still is waiting to move forward. So, but I wanted to bring that up, that that was changed, so maybe the, the name, the new name can be something like that because it is a trail.
With the current name?
The, the name was changed to the City of St. Helens and Port of Columbia County Proposed Joint Milton Creek Trail Project.
Seems like a mouthful.
Yeah, well, that's just who, you know, that's one line, the city and the port.
So Lynn, can you answer a question for me real quick? Could you mention this a couple of times? So when you say that your, your project, right, the thing that you gave your name and your presentation to and you're waiting to move forward on, do you have the intention on doing something with the Milton Creek area separate from this particular act, like?
I'm trying to, to reserve the area before anything happens to it.
So you're wanting to do something that is still in the area that we're all discussing and working on, but would be a completely separate effort, is what you're telling me?
Yes, it's reserving the area. And the trails that belong in there.
Right, so that, I think, is where we all get confused and I, and I disagree with the fact that you're intending to do that individually and separate from the rest of this action. I think that is a huge, a huge area for me where I'm super confused because you seem to be separate from the rest of the project in this.
That's because I was working on it for almost two years and I brought it up before I went on vacation for seven weeks. And then I made that presentation on April 8th and there is none of this, you know, that I knew about. So, I, I, I don't think I understand. I think there's an area and there's a trail and they both are important and can be done and I'm gonna address that later on after we get done with this.
I mean, it's still, you know, we've been talking about.
Because there's a trail there. Exactly, no, 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 it's, it's important facts. Even our subcommittee member thought it was gonna be the trail on the other side of the creek. He was confused and it kind of morphed into the same name of, after I made the presentation. Yes, but I, I don't like to mention the names. Everybody knows, you know, who was on the, the commission and the.
If you're quoting somebody, we should actually have a reference to whom you're speaking. Since he's not your.
So I made that, well, that's in the minutes.
So are you still intending on moving forward with the project that would be separate than what we're discussing right here?
Because it is not a trail that's going around the creek. We have a trail on the Boise Park side already, but we're just going to try and work with the port and that's been worked on, that's been talked about for years and years.
So I, I understand that and I appreciate that Lynn, but I, I will tell you that part of my understanding of this meeting here was to clarify and combine these efforts. And so, you're intending on still doing something that's separate and individual, way and separate from this project? I don't know that I can support that as an individual effort on your behalf.
But it's not about combining, it's what, what the commission wants. Do they want to go ahead and go forward with my presentation to reserve the area? And do they want to go ahead and have the trail moved forward in a separate motion? And that's it. And that's what people need inside and that's why I gave that.
Why in the same?
And that's what I, that's why I gave the background on that. And so, the Boise Park ends, it doesn't go across the creek. It's, it's that area that I want to make a reserve. There's not gonna be a playground there. It's not gonna be, it's got Tucanos Fields. It's, you know, a beautiful place without very many invasions. And I've done a survey on that already.
Yeah, I think where we get confused is that you I didn't know, okay, that I thought I had knowledge of, you know, the development they had done on this, on this before your presentation. I, I spoke that you had a power plant and a safety wall. You know, okay, that's, you know, fine, you know, I didn't think it would be so extensive that it is, I mean, so, I was, I was, it would have been, you know, just the dreams and a few, we voted. And I'm surprised that, was surprised that when you made the presentation that it was so extensive and it was I just don't know, you know, we didn't have a solution and I didn't know how that got, got to be that way without the, the input of the commission.
Would we need to have that reserve in place before we got the trail and everything that you're trying to get taken care of, or is it?
Yeah.
The thing is that, uh, the, the trail is in the master. And so, that's why I think that gives our foot in the door with anything else. So, then again, so it's a Milton Creek trail.
So what does the port understand that you are working?
You don't know what's the point?
Well, I thought you presented to the board, so what, what, what is it then?
The presentation to the board was actually nothing concrete, it was all just an introduction and it would be interested in trying to develop, yeah, these ideas and possibly others. I gave a list of ideas on that.
The idea for the trail?
Trail, also you, I believe you already copied that, I don't know if I brought that with me, but it named a number of things. We discussed a number of things.
And they can.
Possible trail, also we were talking about CCA, it was just a number. Executive Director Sean Clark, when I spoke to him, he said, no decisions were made and then that was fine because it was just, all it was, pretty much was an introduction. These are what we're looking at, we're taking measurements on that side, if you want to join, you know, and see the explore options. It's just an exploratory thing.
And if they're just totally against it, then there's not much we can do. But now feelers, so to speak, right now?
It's been talked about for years.
Yes, okay. So should we move it to a name, deciding a name for the committee? Subcommittee, right?
Well, there's not gonna be any, the subcommittee.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, he said that he doesn't want a subcommittee. But why does change on April the, to the Milton Creek Woodland?
I don't know.
Joint Trail.
Yeah, what, what we're going to be doing.
That, that's my concern. So, you know, regarding the scope of the preserve, should be, or reserve and trail project, right? Whether it be the reserve or the trail or both, my understanding up until recently was that it was both aspects, that there were multiple aspects but to the same greater project. And so that, I feel, would be, would be the best way to move forward because you could put trails in, you could have trails as part of the reserve area, but in order to, to do any work in any of the area and have, again, a consistent message, a unified group effort, I think it should, I think it should be both things. I don't think it should be a separate action by Lynn as an individual on the commission versus a combined action as the rest of the commission working towards a common goal.
I agree.
And the, the committee, the commission was, did know about this happening. In fact, we made a statement on House Bill 3115 to the Planning Commission that we were concerned that that was gonna be used in that Boise Park area. So you wrote up a statement and I presented it to the Planning Commission that we were planning on making some kind of a park there and so we were against using that area. So I went ahead and did that at the Planning Commission, so.
I don't, a lot of writing up.
Yeah, he sent it to me, I think, in 20, a 23-inch bill, yeah. House Bill 3115. So I took it to the Planning Commission. I think it was three paragraphs.
Let me take a peek.
Was that the House bill that's like, if someone slips you a purse, you can sue, okay, okay.
Right.
Which luckily did not get butchered.
No, huh.
That's good.
Yeah, so, no, this has been talked about, but I I, like I said, I've been working on this for almost.
When did you say about that letter, Lynn?
That was probably around June, maybe.
Twenty-three?
And it was a statement, yes. There is a lot of talk here about that, another concern.
Well, welcome, Michael, or sorry.
So I did not send you anything.
Maybe just double check your visions. Again, that's the past, um.
Well, and well, and that's that's definitely that, but again, I I don't wanna be, I don't wanna be misquoted on anything, especially if it's something that I had like written up officially. And I have absolutely zero recollection of that and I I've I have not sent her anything on that note. And I don't wanna be incorrect if I'm going to be saying, hey, I I didn't do that. Um, yeah, so, um, yeah, so I don't have anything in here that that I sent it to you. And so, um, because I just checked all my interactions with you. Yes, and so, um, again, I I, you know, I understand that we've discussed this project in different ways. Throughout the last couple of years, you know, and I do think it's a great project to move forward. But again, I think it should be a unified effort that any actions taken in regards to anything regarding the Milton Creek area. Should be done as as a group, a unified group.
So I never heard about, and I just read something to you all. I never heard about anything being unified like that with a trail. I came back April first and the fourth. I felt four days before our meeting, found out that there was a presentation that was gonna be made. At the April meeting and it was about the joint trail. And the, I had, I had no idea about any, I don't know where you got it, but about anything that was gonna be joint. And I had told several people uh, before, in fact, that was discussed at the uh, February meeting. And but before that, even in. Now I called Welcome Scott as a new vice chair. Uh, that I was gonna be bringing my proposal in April when I got back. And uh, that it was done now and I had as much information that I needed to give to the council for fifteen minutes in the commission. And uh, but the important thing was to uh, get that reserved now. Because there's been talk before about using the logs, you know, in that area. And um, other things, other suggestions as well over the last couple of years. So it is important to do that and uh, you can build a trail and it it takes a long time to do something like that. It takes a lot of different uh, components to, when you're working with different agencies. It takes a a a larger cost, uh, there's gonna have to be intergovernmental agreements. There is gonna have to be a lot of discussions and who is willing to give up something, you know, on their their financial end. Uh, what it uh, uh, is it the best move for them business-wise? I mean, there's a lot of things that they're gonna have to consider, and so it's, they're gonna be making the decision. So it's not about, you know, we have a nice trail there already through the Boise Park, but if they wanna make another trail. I don't think I heard anybody object to that, making a circular trail. In fact, bringing a trail up through the business park is what I remember planning, saying. And coming up through there to go to McCormick and McCormick from there, who knows, you could end up at Knob Hill. So uh, there's a lot of possibilities and uh, but it's a whole different uh, concept.
So Lynn, um, are you willing to work cooperatively with the entire commission on the project? Including moving forward on anything that would be considered a reserve?
It's up to the commission to make a vote on that, it's not mine, I'm I'm I'm.
Right, but we were discussing earlier about doing.
We have all worked cohesively.
If I may continue my statement without being interrupted for just a quick moment, uh, because I'm confused here. So before I can make an official decision or request or anything, I'd like some clarification. Because I've I've tried to ask a couple of times regarding the combining of the project. Into one sole project that we're all working cooperatively towards, including the creation of a reserve. If you feel that that is a vital component that needs to be completed prior to anything else, I think that would be great to discuss among everyone. And make sure that we're doing it correctly, and I know that you've put together presentations, I'm not discounting anything that you've done so far. But what I'm asking is, are you willing to work cooperatively with the rest of the group moving forward on this project? Because what you said earlier was that you were individually submitting.
Because of that, I had done, and I didn't know of any plan to have come together with that. So that's what I've been doing, that's what I've been working on.
Right.
So, and uh, being on the urban trail, subcommittee, uh, it went really smooth. We all worked together. We all are working, well, worked on whatever projects we had. We didn't have, um, we we've all worked properly together because we bring it to the commission. And the one, somebody has a concept or an idea, you know, they bring it to the commission and mention it in discussion items. So we have a little talk around and people can give their opinions and uh, suggestions and uh, yeah, that's a good idea. And once anybody's on board, everybody's on board, then they can go ahead and have a vote. They bring a motion and have a vote, that's how it's always worked. This didn't happen, that I saw. So.
There was a uh, a discussion in March about approaching the uh, the port.
It wasn't here in March.
But so we still are gonna be working on this.
And I looked on the minutes, but I didn't see any.
It was, if you look at the video.
Oh, it's got it, you gotta look at the video.
It's, I mean, the minutes are just, I mean, not a full account. It is in the video, um, I did email you on that too.
And I found it when I got back.
Later way, when I, but that doesn't mean that we can't vote over the email answer. Or not in an email.
Well.
We actually passed and I think we're finally go forward.
Right, okay.
So if we're just gonna continue with this.
I wanna mention that everything was afterward.
If I can finish with, you know, if you continue on this wall, I don't think that it's quite as even continuing this need.
Well, uh, you gotta remember that I found out that email after I got back and didn't hear a word about that. I didn't know you were planning this, nothing, everything was done without me even knowing it, and I was supposed to be a co-chair. So, you know, that was, that's why this is such a surprise.
So the thought, again, I'm not, I don't have official voice here, so take it for what it's worth, but I'm just thinking of the Riverwalk project behind you. We have phase one, this is our priority, this is what we're starting with. Down the line, we have phase two that we're gonna work on, once phase one is underway. Why couldn't this be a phase project where maybe the majority of what Lynn's been working on is a priority? So as a group, you decide this is phase one, this is what is our priority, this is what needs to be done now. Then you figure out what's gonna be phase two, what comes next.
Exactly.
Just a thought.
Yeah, that's that's, that's kind of what I was mentioning is, is in trying to ask Lynn if she'd be willing to work cooperatively with this whole group effort. In that, if if it is a priority in order to do the reserve first, right, and move forward later with the different trails and other aspects, that'd be. But I think an individual or something doing, something separate is not, is not in the best interest of the product as a whole. Like, we all have to come together and work the whole project as a whole.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Yeah.
Reserve, would that protect our trails that we're trying to implement from maybe industry moving in? And and so I think, I mean, I created a really bad. I look at like the reserve as the whole, and inside we have a trail camping and then the CCA, right, for the salmon run, kind of protector, being able to study that. So I think if we could combine both, maybe phase one is getting this as a reserve, then that's phase one, then phase two could be, all right, now we're gonna work with. Um, we're working with the port to see, make sure that they're on board with what our feelings are. And then move, once we have that, taking care of the port, we take our presentation to the city and maybe moving it to the city is phase three. I think if we combine both, rather than have them separate, because I think reserve is a huge part in getting those trails put in. Because if we don't have a reserve, what's gonna stop some maybe coming in and and maybe tearing that up? Yeah.
We have to agree to uh, if you wanna form this. And then, then we'll go, and we, I, as I put it out in my, my proposal here, that would give it a fresh start. And we all, we as, we don't say, we want this one first, we want that before we, you mean, start. This whole new uh, uh, approach.
You wanna make a motion?
I actually like to make a motion, I've been forming this for the last little bit, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt. This proposed plan, as committed by Scott, we're gonna get the handout today, right? In regards to this project, um, and the Milton Creek Woodland Reserve project. Uh, and we can adjust the name later if you guys feel that it's inappropriate. Um, but I would like to move forward, make a motion that we adopt this as a plan of process. And that the scope of this project includes all things related to the Milton Creek area. Reserve, trails, and any other actions we intend to make in that area.
Well, second that. Assuming Dana, part of that motion would be to dissolve the current subcommittee, is it?
This would be in place of the current subcommittee.
Any subcommittee or committee.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a seat law?
Subcommittee, correct, yes, if we know subcommittees, we would be adopting the plan as it is proposed in this, in this handout.
Motion's been made and seconded, so I guess to start with a vote, uh, all in favor? Discussion, sorry, sorry, getting ahead of myself. I think it's a great idea, that's my discussion part. And yes, it's important we all work together and I simplify, so. Last moving parts, you know.
If it is truly all inclusive, then I agree.
Okay, all is in favor? All is opposed?
What was your vote, Lynn?
I put my hand up, yes. Hope everybody has had a chance to read this. Okay, so it's um, four thirty. And uh, we're gonna start on the next section of the agenda.
Wouldn't this proposal actually make all this press a missing?
Correct.
So I I had learned that we adjourned.
Okay, I have some things to read, okay, we're not gonna be talking about a subcommittee or anything. But I had written up some things. That I didn't get to, yes, there in the agenda, scope and reserve the trail project at four thirty.
We just completed that with the.
Okay. But I didn't even get to address it.
We had an opportunity for discussion with the motion.
You know, calm down.
That's an unfair thing to say, so.
I just wanna say so far they have been separate, they have been separate and I would argue that we continue to treat them separately. That was my my thought and I didn't get to even finish it, so. I guess uh, we're moving forwards with uh, what Scott has brought forward today. And uh, cause we had to have, um, you know, this vote on a a reserve trailer vote, but I didn't get to finish. What the um, concepts were and what the differences were. So who will?
Committee. So I think this is all.
Right, because we we clarified the scope.
Yes.
We clarified.
The next thing we need to do is discuss how and who will make the presentation to city council, so I think that could wait till maybe June, our June meeting.
Right, I can go on the next meeting because the commission can, we can put this on the.
That's what I just said. Okay, so there needs to be a motion for that to move it to the June meeting. A motion to discuss how and who will make the presentation to city council.
That would be included in the ongoing discussion item for the project, because that would be part of that.
Yes.
Right, so you don't have to do a separate motion, we already completed that.
How is it gonna be presented to the city council?
We will discuss that at the next meeting.
Well, that's what I just said, you know, so you should have a motion for that to make sure that that's brought there and put on the agenda.
Lynn, if you read.
The motion to put this on the agenda.
Right, we don't have to do that, and and if you, we all, we all just voted and approved this particular plan. And you know, down here in the potential working model, it has a standing agenda item each month for the project. And so it is, it's already going to put a place on the agenda.
Is there any other comments or discussion before we adjourn?
I would like to make a public statement that I find behavior of Lynn Pettit be unkind and inappropriate. And I would like to have a discussion, um, however it is required to moving forward. In regards to the way that you interact with other members on this commission.
I had to put some things together and I didn't even get to read it.
You have the opportunity to have a discussion during the discussion time on that exact topic.
You have to follow the agenda.
You were following the agenda.
Okay, well, this is this discussion then can be done. So is there any other comments before we adjourn this meeting and then?
Um, I don't know, I'll talk to HR. Because I don't wanna do anything out of line.
Yeah.
Brandon, do you have anything that you?
If there are concerns, I think that's the time to.
Repress them.
Well, that's the, that's the problem, that I don't wanna do anything inappropriate. I I don't know what is the best action moving forward when I have concerns about conduct in commission meetings. I think that the last couple of meetings, um, it has become a frustration of mine to witness Lynn. Overspeaking, shutting down, and attempting to limit the speech of other commission members. And in this particular case, if I'm going to be honest, um, her making the statement for me to calm down. When I simply made a clarification was was inappropriate. I was not in any agitated way, I I don't think that's appropriate in a public meeting. And so I don't want to, I don't want any of this kind of discussion to be a public, a public meeting discussion. Well, it has to be, so I'd like to touch base with HR just to make sure that I'm not, I'm not doing anything inappropriate, if that makes sense. In in regards to addressing conduct with commission members.
Again, this group, this group as a whole has the voice, so if you want to add things to the agenda, if you want to encourage additional discussion. That's for this group to decide as a whole.
Yeah. Right, so the um. Yeah, so this, so, so this is, this is, for the code, you want to see all of this?
Not just this part, it's from the code.
Yes, the code, the city, city of Saint Helens Code of Ethics states that leadership facilitates, rather than blocks. Open discussion, any official who controls uh, parliamentary process has an ethical obligation to avoid behavior. Such as strained interpretation of the rules, refusal to recognize a person, or arbitrarily delaying a discussion. I do think that's applicable in this case, um, yeah. But I don't know what steps would be, I don't know what next steps would be, right, to not see that.
So, um, you have, you have submitted a motion for a German, I was second.
Meeting has adjourned.